My pleasure, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I see we have no public hearings tonight, so we will go right into the consent agenda. The two items on the consent agenda at this point are council minutes of October the 13th and the monthly bills.
I believe that we approved the consent agenda.
Second?
Motion in a second that we approve the consent agenda. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop? Councilman Hubbard? Councilman Shawalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Councilman Van Hoosier?
Aye.
I believe that's five, oh, and one out.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
You got to that place so fast. I had just sat down, but I do have a question concerning the water meters on the bill, bills for this month, and I think Mr. Helms is going to go with that at the end of the meeting, is that correct?
Okay, very good. Don't have anything under rec- recognitions tonight. Fourth item on the agenda is a citizens' hearing. This is where we allow citizens, ask citizens to come forward with any questions, comments, or things that are on their mind. Is there anybody here to address council? If you'll stand, give us your name, address, and you can feel free to use the microphone, or if you'd like to address us from there, that's fine, either way.
My name is Jonathan Freedham. My wife and I live at 315 Howery Street in Christiansburg. We moved there about in 2000, in May or June of 2012. We got married same time, there was a lot going on. I'm here today because we have a major deer problem in our yard. There's major damage to our backyard. We own an acre and a half, or acre and a quarter, of property. I've tried talking to the gentleman that owns acres of land behind us to see if I can be allowed to hunt back there. With rifle first, I was turned down. I was then asked if I could hunt with bow only, I was turned down. He said the deer need a safe place to raise their young, and they do, and they come back up into our yard. In fact, today at 6 o'clock, we had seven deer in our yard tearing it all up. I have photos, if you're interested in seeing those, of the damage, and of the evidence. I have photos of deer droppings, the whole nine yards, and I have a photo of our front yard versus our backyard and the damage we have there. I know the current ordinance for urban archery is three acres in Christiansburg. I was advised to request that be lower to an acre. However, I do understand the safety of the citizens of this town and the people. I don't know if that's the appropriate thing for the town to do. However, considering there are, and I have Google Earth images of all the land behind us, there's literally miles of land behind us, of forested area. If there could be some way to allow myself permission with a bow only, that has about a 50-yard range, honestly, to harvest some of these animals and either keep them meat for myself, or provide it for the hunters for the hungry, I have no problem doing that. I just feel I have a right to protect my property. We spend thousands of dollars with the guys in purple, and they do a lot of treatment for our yard to make it look really good, because I want to have, I don't want to be that citizen that has a bunch of junk in their yard that you guys hear about from the neighbor that everyone hates. So we're trying to do the right thing. I'm trying to do the right thing by going to the people that own the property to see if I can work something out. It's gotten really, really, really bad, and it is typically bad when there's not a lot of mass in the actual woods for the animals to eat, and this year is one of those years. If you'd like to see photos that have them...
If you'd like to present them to me, may we hang on to those for future reference?
And I've also included some invoices from the guys in purple.
You have a fence around your yard, or in the back, or...
We do not. To be 100% honest with you, deer can jump eight feet standing, and to do a fence around our property, the only ones that actually work, there was a study done by the West Virginia University and Michigan University, I know as Hokey fans, we're not West Virginia fans. But what works is an angle fence where it would come angle up, because deer can judge height or distance, they can't judge both at the same time. And what they'll do is they'll hit their head on the fence, and then they kind of freak out. It looks very, very bad. I have a right to have a good-looking property, and I also have a right not to put a fence around my entire yard. And I don't want to have to do that, nor do I want to have to pay for it, nor do I want to come to the town saying, "You can pay for the repairs to my yard." I think that's my responsibility to do that. Likewise, it's also my responsibility, I believe, to keep my yard safe.
The property owner behind you, is his property fenced?
No, sir. His, he owns, he owns some land where his house is, and he used to be part of the town at some level, I think it's Robertson or something like that. He was heavily involved with the town at some capacity years past. He owns his area where his house is, and then he also owns over, he owns over 100 acres, I think, of just forested land. And then there are other people that own behind that area, and you can, in what I've provided you, you can see Google Earth images of all the land out there. And they own all of that, other people own that property, and they actually have like hunt clubs that use that land, and they won't let other people use that.
Can you give me another idea of exactly where your house is?
315 Howery Street. Do you know where Wayside Drive is?
Going out.
Okay, okay, I've got you.
We're just on the border of the town, the national county property.
May I make a comment, Mayor?
Certainly.
Mr. Freedham?
Yes, sir.
Okay. It was probably two years ago, I think, we've had, or I've heard from people in the past, including my neighbors, about the same. I mean, we're all aware of that, and a lot of us experienced that in our house. We hardly a day goes by that we don't see deer as well. But what I want to let you know is, we did, responding to other citizens that had this concern, we did lower our threshold, was it Barry, was it five acres?
Four five.
To three, but there's also a state law that prohibits within 300 feet of a public street.
And we are, where I would be shooting is beyond, I've looked at that because I always thought that might be a loophole I could do, but then I realized the town laws then would trump that, because you've got to fit both those categories, that'd be within 300 feet as well as within three acres.
Well, and I don't have any silver bullet for you, no pun intended, but we're all, we're all aware of it, and I think, you know, until, until there's a method to, you know, thinning herds in urban area, which I know Blacksburg does some urban stuff, but I guess I want to say we have taken some proactive measures and tried to do that, and you speak correctly in saying that there's also a safety concern, we get down to an acre of land. I don't know...
Yeah. Well, and that was why I thought, I mean, I'm being 100% honest, I am an avid hunter, I'm an avid outdoorsman, even though my waistline may not indicate that, and that's why archery, I felt, was a valid, a valid opportunity. The range is limited, pardon the language, the kill range is limited to about 50, maybe 60 yards. It is so wooded and thick behind me, the arrow is not going to travel very far. I am not asking to capture these animals or thin the herd other than during legal hunting times, whether that be urban archery season, regular archery season, or regular hunting season. I was also informed that by the landowner that, that people walk on trails back there, and that since 2012, I saw one person walking back there, and he was illegally on our property trying to hunt on our property. So people are not using those trails. He does allow a couple select people to hunt back there, so that is not a valid argument that people are, that he does not allow people back there. It's very hit or miss, and I'm just trying to protect my property. And, and, sorry, sir.
Would your, does your neighbor agree with the fact that you may have to track down a wounded animal? Does he agree with you coming on his property to do that?
He told me...
Because that's a high percentage of things.
Yes, sir. He told me that if I could get the town to allow me to harvest animals on my property, he would be okay if I tracked the animal onto his in front of back, as long as I had no weapon on me at that time. The challenge I have with that is if the animal is not deceased. So I'm in a big loophole. I've got to do the right thing, because quite honestly, wouldn't, with the bow, it would not be very hard, and because of neighbors I've heartened apart, when you go on my back porch and just shoot one and go grab it at night or something, and I'm not that type of person.
If I remember correctly, when Virginia, when Blacksburg was having problems at the airport, they actually hired professional people to come in to thin the herd at that time. But I, you know, I don't know how we can get into that.
I was likewise wondering, and maybe this is mayor's prerogative, but one other thing I think Blacksburg does, don't they issue special permits for people to hunt at certain times? I, well, might be somebody at least that can do. But I think they do, I think they do issue special licenses to certain people to do thinning.
Do you still have, do you have a problem with the size of the light?
Well, yeah, just maybe something to check into.
We can research it, huh?
Call and see, but I think, I think I've heard something about that. They do, when they get really bad infestations, they allow, you know, hire special, or allow special people to go in and do it and use the meat for...
Absolutely, and I'd be more happy, I mean, last year we had 18 deer in our yard one night, and we had fox rabies, it was crazy. But now you guys have a lot of other folks here, I don't want to dominate this meeting, but I would like to know what you'd like me to do as a follow-up, or what I should expect from the town.
I would like, if you would jot down your contact information, so we can get to that. Can we research the property owners and determine who it is?
Yeah, and he's, he's two houses up. When I talked to, and hopefully she's not here, the secretary to the town manager, and she knew what was at the top of her head. And I apologize.
That's all right, we'll try to figure that out.
We'll research special permits, see what Blacksburg did, see if there's a way to do it.
Okay, that's, that's what we do, but if you would jot down, if you've got a business card or whatever you've got there...
You can leave there if you want me to have it.
Do we need any more?
Be nice to keep it on file, just in case.
Thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Collins.
Hello. Let me just let you all know I was in Parrot, and I got stuck in Parrot, and I got here as quickly as I could, in the weather. But apologies, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Kritzler.
Yes, sir.
We will look into this, hopefully within a month, but it's best we got, do the researching on.
Yes, sir. I appreciate it.
Okay, or soon, if we can.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here to address council? Having none, I close the citizens' hearing and staff reports. Do we have any tonight, Barry? All right, we're just getting right along. Discussion by mayor and council members, and the first thing on the agenda is a resolution for VDOT revenue sharing funds.
And so discussion of VDOT, what they, how they want the resolution presented, so it's not made in time.
Okay, so we'll table that. Discussion regarding the council follow-up task list, and it is in your agenda packet, and I think what we need to determine is try to find a night for a work session on that.
It's been whittled down pretty far, so I don't know.
The revenue sharing applications due this week, aren't they?
Yes, but we have another mic to get the revenue sharing.
Well, Mr. Helms and I have gone through this, and I will say, I will say that he went through most of them. Thank you, John. And our, the list has swiddled quite a bit, there's some that are pretty fresh that we haven't gotten to yet, nor have we assigned any functions on those. I did hear by the, oh, never mind, I was going to say we could have a work session on the 3rd, but I believe that's election day, so we probably would not want, would not want to do that. We have the 12th as the Truman Wilson property work date. So other than the 3rd and the 12th, I know there is the downtown central business will meet on the 11th, right before our next.
Mr. Mayor, the next meeting we have in November is going to be the 10th, I believe.
That's correct.
And, and since you all whittled this down, it seems to me that I think, and what I've seen, I think we could do this in an hour before council meeting, frankly. At first, we were a little worried it'd be two or two and a half hours, but what I've seen here, and what the action you all have proactively taken, I think an hour is sufficient. But I'll defer to you all, I think we can do it.
Central Business Committee is not going to have a meeting before the next, I don't know, 10th?
Yes, I think they are. They're not going to meet this coming Tuesday, which is election, and I was, I was right. The 10th is our next meeting.
What do you think, Barry? Do you think that we could get all this in on that workshop on the 12th?
On the Truman Wilson property?
We start at 6:00? I think this is going to take about an hour, obviously, if that, and I think in Truman Wilson property is going to be more informative. We could go from 6 to 8, I'd be fine with that on the 12th, again, if you all want to do that. It's either that or come back two different days. I'd like to be there one day.
I would, you, Cor.
I'd like seeing you all, but not that much.
So I will ask if all of you, I'm sure all of you did get a copy of the packet that has a much Truman version of what we, what we've been looking for, looking at in the past. So I will ask you all to review this, and if it is okay, we will set the workshop on this one, the work session on this one at 6 o'clock on the 12th.
We currently have the Truman at set at 6, but it's at 7:00.
Well, it's heaven, one work session covered by a clinic.
Just wait.
We don't have to, in the work session, we don't have to upgrade that any, or can we?
We'll, we'll, I'll...
Okay. All right, so we're at 6:00 on the 12th. Very good, thank you. Be thinking, as you look at that list, is there any, there are a couple of things on there, do we need to, well, just be thinking about areas that you may want to, us to consider to get to expedite some of these things. Council reports. Mr. Bishop?
Yes, Mayor. Last Monday, several members of the town and community attended a training session, one day, session on tourism driving, and during that, we had a pretty good workshop to learn how to bring tourists into town and hopefully keep them here. And also, at the end of that work session, we were one of 24 towns to be certified as a tourist-driven community, which once again makes us eligible to apply for a grant down the road, and we were awarded a certificate.
Wow, thank you.
And I said, once again, there were several town members and several members from the community attending that training.
Saw the nice picture in the paper.
Did you read the caption, huh?
Yes, our ministry.
Yeah, okay. Anything, anything else? Mr. Hall?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Had an opportunity to go to the New York Community Action 50th Anniversary, the Golden Anniversary. Most of you are familiar with their programs through the Head Start program, that's probably their most well-known, but they've got their hands into a lot of other community outreach projects, and it's fantastic, in fact, we had, I didn't realize, but we've got quite a few people that are on some of our administrative, I'm sorry, our administrative boards, that are members of the Board of Energy Cares, I didn't realize that. Mrs., for some reason, I'm forgetting her name, but she's on our recommission board. Kritzler, Mr. Kritzler is a member, and it's a fantastic event, Delegate Yost spoke, and in addition to, oh gosh, I'm forgetting his name too, Senator, Ms. John Blant, yes. Was there and spoke. In my opinion, now, both of them spoke just fine, but I enjoyed listening to the teacher more than any of them. She was fantastic, she had, she actually was in Head Start herself when she was a young child, and growing up, she would love, she would love to speak from a position of experience, but a fantastic event. The, we have a recommission meeting, which is the first Monday in November, that will go on as scheduled, is my understanding at this point, even though it's the day before Election Day. One last thing, and I guess I didn't think, thank you all, this helps set the next girl that we, you know, we're still in that month, for the month of October, everybody's starting to span, they're starting to range out a little bit, and Mayor was kind enough to point me to his contact, Mr. Gerald, who obviously is a very high-up in the organization, about as high as you can go, and in Pulaski, we're going to have a meeting on the 2nd of December, that morning, with, I believe, Mr. Gerald, perhaps even Mrs. Vance from Tech as well, and all the members of the gas department, and the hope is to start yet another satellite for Hudson Nestro in Pulaski. It's a fantastic gas department there, those ladies are wonderful, and I think it'd be a very positive addition, and I'm hoping that their community will get behind it as Christiansburg has. I think we're doing a good service to a very worthwhile organization that supports and helps protect our young people. That's all I have at this time.
Mr. Van Hoosier?
Well, since I got drafted to go on the Stormwater Stakehold, I mean, we've been having some meetings, and quite frankly, I've enjoyed them, they've been good meetings, and I think we're making some real progress, and tomorrow will be a significant milestone for us, I think.
Just one of those words, those are things you shouldn't say, knowing that you're kind of retiring, you're going to find yourself on all kinds of...
But it is a good committee, and they've done some good work, and I think they're going to meet their objective, that when they'll be able to present something to council.
Mr. Stipes?
I have nothing, thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Shawalter?
Yeah, the meeting part of this, the advisory board for the Central Business District Downtown in Cambria, we're moving forward, we're having meetings almost every week, seems like everybody's showing up, and come in December, there's going to be presentation to council, we're developing some strategies, short, long-term goals, things like that, so, got any questions, reach out to me, or Tacy, or Karen, or Barry, or Randy, or Nicole's been in there too, most every time, and just, if you have questions about it, some interesting stuff that's coming forward. I know, Cor, you mentioned just some housekeeping, we need to have a solid...
Ask your emails to Mr. Cummins, and so...
So Barry, if we could, if you could find some time to let us know when you could, you and public workers can meet, maybe one night, one evening, real quick, for about half an hour to an hour, just to follow up on our last meeting that occurred some time ago, just so we make sure we know what's going, or where we're going with some studies and things like that, or if something needs to be requested. And there's one last thing, I'm surprised Cor didn't mention, this Saturday is...
Oh, Getting Scary on the Huckleberry, you're right.
Is Getting Scary on the Huckleberry. I just looked at my phone, so it's supposed to be really nice in the, in the 60s, probably not that morning when you do it, but I know my wife and I are doing it, and my kids, I know a few other people, so it's, it's something, you know, if you have council members or friends, you know, definitely encourage to come out, this is, you know, kind of Christiansburg hasn't had something like this in quite some time, so I think it's going to be pretty special, and hope to see you there.
What time does the race start?
Nine.
Thank you.
Other than the eight mile four mark, Steve made us... All during the whole time, so the kids can give them the parking lot. Yeah, there's going to be the field of trouble. Trunk or treat, and there's going to be breakfast, refreshments.
Pancakes outdoors?
Not speed over. That's right, but that's it for me.
8:30 to 11:30, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, that's good, very good. Mr. Shawalter, anything else?
That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Hubbard?
I just want to do a report here from the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission heard a discussion on chickens at their last meeting, and I think at their next meeting, they're going to maybe make some kind of decision concerning, and what they would like to do is, would you like to have someone from Planning Commission come to make a report to council concerning how they studied the situation and what their decisions were, or how, the question is, what do you want the Planning Commission to do concerning the chickens?
I would think that it's certainly no different than any other matter that's come before Planning Commission that has to come before us. I would think that certainly the chairman should be here in, or the vice chairman, or if all Planning Commission wants to come, but I mean, there's, this is a signed thing that we've asked them to do, so I would think we don't need to break precedent as to...
And so make a little report, a statement about what they discussed and things like that.
Everything they've presented to us and recommendations?
Okay, sounds good.
Recommendations.
And recommendations.
Yeah, I think Mr. Moore would do a good job of that. Thank you, Mr. Hubbard, anything else?
Well, I do have one other thing. You know, Mr. Van Hoosier's last meeting is coming up, and I was thinking that maybe on that last meeting, which I think is the 22nd of December, that if council thought it was a decent idea, that maybe we could meet at Amelia's, maybe at 5 o'clock that day, and have a couple pieces of pizza, and just a general thing, and I could maybe reserve the little back room that they have at Amelia's, and, you know, say a few things about him, and maybe a few of them would be decent.
Boy, it's been 19 years for this show.
So I'm, if you would, maybe, I'll sit here at the end of the meeting, and I'm not sure if you can make a statement right now, you know, we're talking about you, and if you want to bring, you know, wives or whatever to the thing, that would be...
We'd have to get a, I'm glad that you brought that up, Mr. Hubbard, because I had been thinking all day about putting you in charge of that, so I am, and I'll ask you to get a head count, and I think, I would think possibly...
Do we have to have pizza for everybody?
We need, we may, we may need to rethink this thing a little bit, if you have the town staff, and, you know, whoever, whomever it is open to, we need to make sure that one of Amelia's can accommodate that crowd, and I'm not sure that they can. So would they look elsewhere at the fire department or something?
I, myself, was just thinking about council, and council and spouses.
Okay.
Now, let's, let's leave it this way, because I know a lot of people can't, this would be on December 22nd, this would be at 5 o'clock at Amelia's, and maybe come to me and tell me, or someone, that between now and the next meeting, how about that? We, you know, the first meeting in November, and then I'll go make arrangements here. Now, we have not decided who will pay for this, now we might all...
Or maybe Mr. Helms.
I think the guy that brought it up will pay for it. Thanks, good.
I think it's a great idea, I mean, I was certainly do that, and I think we'll do that amongst ourselves and cover Jim.
What you may want to talk to them is, you know, they may give us a pretty decent price on that little buffet that they have, so that it's not specifically limited to pizzas, so...
Oh, hey, Mayor, I'll pay for your pizza.
I don't know if they have that.
I don't think they have it at night.
I don't know, I think if you ask them far enough ahead of time and have the number of people, they will.
Okay.
They've done that on occasion for other clubs that meet there.
It's good to have back to earth.
Any ideas? Okay.
All right, I'm finished.
All right, you got it, done? Believe it or not, I've got three or four things to talk about tonight. First and foremost is, in front of you, you have a copy of a resolution, Small Business Saturday Resolution, and we have, with the support of the state, the town of Blacksburg, the county, we've been working on this thing, and to have, to designate November the 28th, Saturday, November the 28th, as Small Business Saturday, to encourage people to come and shop locally. I know the Chamber of Commerce got involved in this last year, there's several gift cards, several rewards to people throughout the day that have shopped in some of the stores, so my part of this, and my pleadings to you all, is if you don't have any problems, I will present this resolution to the chamber in the...
historically are sort of really big box store days.
Yeah, so we need to get the locals, local merchants involved in it.
Right, that's it.
All right, so.
We need to vote on it.
We need to vote on it, thank you, but since I did have that on the day.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion, thank you. Let's call and roll, please.
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Hopper?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Councilman Van Hoosier?
Aye.
B6O, thank you, gentlemen, I appreciate it. The next thing, and I'm trying to do this in some type of chronological order, I believe the clerk of council has given out the financial forms again, they are due when?
December 15th.
December 15th, so we're now doing this every six months instead of once a year, so.
Trying to cut down.
Yeah, write that on there, so if you will be collecting those, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Do you want them, if any of you want to leave them, once you're done, leave them here sealed, and we'll see that they get into Michelle's correspondence box?
Yes.
Okay. The Rescue Squad, I got an email from Joe today, I think a lot of you got copies of the Rescue Squad's annual membership dinner and installation of officers, will be Sunday night, December the 6th, at the Rescue Squad, and they've, there are going to be more formal invitations coming, so just to put you on the alert that that night is going to be out there, it's always a good dinner, it's, I would encourage as many of you on council and your wives as possible to come. The last thing I have is kind of a, kind of twofold, the annual Christmas parade this year is December the 11th, it starts at seven o'clock, with a new twist, there is a special version of the farmer's market, Sarah, do you have any general idea on what's, if you don't mind?
Got a flyer right here. We're going to run from four to nine that day, set up starting about two o'clock, wanted to start it so early, just so we would be able to set us in the daylight, and people would have some time in the daylight to be down there. We are also opening it up to artisans and crafters, those applications have to be in by the 13th of November, and they're posted on the Towns Bill site, and we've linked to it on Facebook, or I've emailed out, so we're going to do that on Hickok Street right there, this is something the vendors have requested, and the market committee was kind enough to let us roll with it, so I'm really excited about it, and I hope it goes really well, so.
And I think Billy's got lights, he's going to light it up down there for the evening?
Yeah, he said he had it under control.
Okay. I'll take that, loosen my collar a little bit, and hope it works out.
Me, too.
I'm sure, I'm sure. Now, the other part of the Christmas parade, that I would like to throw out an invitation to all the council members and families, is to come join and walk this parade with us, Councilman Hall and his family walked it with us last year, and I think they had a pretty good time.
We had blessed.
So I would encourage all of you to do so, it's, I think, in the past, I think we've ridden the bus and kind of waved out the window, but this is not, it's not a long walk, it's not, it's not, it's not bad at all, and I think it's, I would encourage all of you to do so, and I will be hammering them, so I'll be reminding each of you as we go, as we go along down the road. Okay, I think that's got all I needed from my side of the fence. Town managers report.
This news permit request for contractor equipment stories at 1950 Palmer Street Northwest, like to set that for the 8th of December.
So moved.
Second. Is that the only condition? All those in favor, second if I'm saying that? Certainly there's no one opposed? Thank you, Mr. Hill.
I had a note that someone, that they want to reduce the amount of land needed for our deer hunting, but that's been taken care of.
We weren't sure you were coming tonight, John, but we knew what you were asking for, so.
Okay, in front of you, there's a email that received from Bowery, that she forwarded from, that came from Joe, Boil at the Rescue Squad, ambulance that he had in the budget, came in, hit 200,000 for the replacement of it, came in at 212,000, and he'd like to delete the budget simulant, which was 25,000, and use that money to make up the difference.
Does that require a vote, since it's an item in the budget, Mr. Helms, or?
It's, it's eliminating one of the council items, and Bowery would like to have a vote.
And I've just got a question, the simulant, which is that, that separated 25,000 budgeted item, what was simulant? I know what an ambulance is, but I'm trying to figure out what simulant is.
I was going to look that up. Get there.
Same, you know, nothing about simulants. I would think that it would be on the line of some type of a, I don't think that that is an actual vehicle, I think it might be a test, a training type thing for drivers and crew members, so that's, that's.
But since they don't need to fill 25, do you need to transfer the whole thing, or just keep the 13 in there, and maybe add to it next year or something, if they need it?
Well, it will roll over, but.
Whatever.
If it requires a vote, then, Mr. Helms, if that can be done tonight, I'll make a motion that we allow the budget amendment to move 12,000 from the simulant line item into the allocated amount for the replacement ambulance for the fiscal year 2016.
Second. Got a motion and a second, any discussion?
Joe does a good job in that's what he needs.
I think so. Mr. Stipes?
Ready, boys?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Huppert?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Councilman Van Hoosier?
Aye.
B6O, thank you, gentlemen. While still in your court, Mr. Stevens.
I have two requests for leave without pay, one individual is applying for disability retirement, can't return to work, and he'd like to have nine days of leave, unpaid leave without pay, starting, actually started, would have started on 8th of October, just now found out that he wasn't going to be able to return to work, and the second one's for an individual that's had a worker's comp, who's had some surgery, and his doctor just changed his return to work date to sometime in December, so I'd like to go ahead and request through the end of December for him also.
Both of those are leave without pay?
Leave without pay, yes.
And we can live along in the meantime?
Well, one of them's going to be replaced, and if there's a position available, when they come back, when they get back to work, we'll put them in that, but the other one will be filling that position, we know he's not coming back to work, while he's applying for retirement, state, a quote town employee, until it gets approved.
Okay. I have a move to approve. Second. Got a motion and a second. Mr. Stipes?
Yes, sir.
Am I, do I rush you too quick on that?
No, no. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Huppert?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Councilman Van Hoosier?
Aye.
6O, thank you.
And the last thing I have is, you have a report in front of you, Town Engineering Department Project Update, I asked him for a trail update, and he decided to just update all our projects. On the first page, Mr. Hopper had a question about the AMI water meter system upgrade, we have about 8,200 meters out of 10,000 in place now, and they're working on getting a software to talk to each, the building software, to talk to the reading software, and they're still changing up the meters, and hopefully sometime in December, it'll be finished, we can shoot for, in the first couple of months of the year, switching to monthly readings and doing that.
8,200 meters?
So far, so 10,000.
We have about 10,000.
How many customers do we have?
About 10,000.
Okay, so it's, okay.
So after, after we put it in, they have to go check it all out, that'll take a couple months?
Well, after they, all get installed, then somebody go back around, make sure that the meters that are listed, meter number 64321 is at 685 Hillcrest Drive, like the records show, and make sure they're not leaking, and that kind of stuff, so someone has to physically go around, look at each meter again, third knowing it, but we'll double check, so there are three or four that we found that aren't at the right house.
How do you, how do you know if yours has been replaced?
It's got a plastic water meter cover, black one, that's so that the radio can get, a lot of them used to have metal lids on them, but the radio signal wouldn't go through the metal lids, so have a black, plastic lid, yours probably been changed.
Okay. I don't work checking every day, but I'm ready for that.
I got a lot of lemons on top of mine, so.
And it's going to be really nice, because someone says, they come in, and they say, I think I had a leak, we can look and see, well, they'll be able to go on the internet also and check it, but you can look and see if there's a constant amount of water going through the meter day and night, and read down to, down or so a minute, so watch that.
Mr. Helms, the page three of that report, which really details, please pass on my appreciation for what's been provided to us, the Huckleberry Trail Phase 2D extension?
Yes, sir.
Brings the Huckleberry Trail from the Rex and I guess Drew down to where the shopping plaza is down below, and frankly, is the next segment, and will be hoped to be downtown eventually, but it says that that's a project for construction to bid, it's likely in November.
As soon as BDOP says we can bid.
So we're right there?
Yes.
I didn't realize we were that close.
That phase, we are.
That phase, right, and that's just down the food line, that's.
Yes.
But it is, I mean, it's written here that everything is ready to go, it's just a matter of, again, get a bid on the possession and then bid it, but any idea, and I might hold you to this, but any idea when that phase could be completed, with residents?
Somewhere in late spring, because asphalt plants, it won't, it'll pave until.
About the summer, next year, that's going to be.
Should be.
That's fantastic.
Assuming we get decent bids, don't have to rebid it, all that stuff, like the downtown project, we had to rebid, those first bids were too high, so assuming we get good bids, yes, it should be finished.
That's great.
Late spring.
Thank you.
And the other thing on the bikeway, walkway system is Anderson and Associates doing a trail study, it's on page four, right in the middle, and they're looking at nine different areas, and as we turn over to Bikeway Walkway Committee, we'll be working on that. Also working on the trail from Aquatic Center, and from the Recreation Center, over to the high school, working on plans for that.
Have there been any more communications with the county or the school board in that regard, Mr. Helms, as far as the high school's concerned?
Yes, I've been working with them.
Is everything, is there agreements, or tentative agreements, no formal, but?
We've been talking, going about routing it so long, and here, their future plans, and it's going well, better than we thought it did start off with.
Anything else to come before council?
I have one, one thing to bring up, Mr. Mayor, something we have no control whatsoever, so now's a good time for me to mention, the, I would, I've been very irritated, is the best word for me to put it, with the Chrismer High School, and I remain such, because of this plan that they have about these, a student has one tardy, the student goes to ISS, I understand that, I don't know if all of our parents in the town are aware of the policy, I think they had 40 in ISS the other day, a day before the SOLs were set to begin, and I've brought this up in a couple of their ISOL meetings, I know they're checking into it, and it's not the same county-wide, but I was informed that until a policy like that to be changed, and I don't, I have no problem with accountability, heck, I guess I'd be in ISS, I was late for the first time in years tonight, here, at least at council meetings, and, but I think this is, it's becoming a bit of an issue, I keep getting more calls, and we don't have any control over it, but I get more and more calls from concerned parents, and again, just because I tend to be a lot in schools, but it seems to me that the only way that this could be reviewed and changed to, I think, I understand there's a couple of problem kids, but we've got kids up there right now with over 40, or no GPA school in ISS, and I just don't see the basis for it all, I don't see how that's narrowly tailored to fit a need or meet a particular problem, so, you know, not in that school all the time, but that's my, my perspective on it, and it seems to me that unless our parents and or are at the school board meetings, I think is, I think that's what's been inferred to me that needs to happen, so just want to make you all aware of it, I don't know if you all are, but some of you don't have kids in high school, I do, my daughter's not been affected by it, and I hope that doesn't happen, and I'd hate to know what's going to happen, but that's, I think it's really been on my mind a lot, because I, again, I work with these kids who, you want them to be engaged in the school process, and now you've got 40 plus that are in ISS, getting no instruction for a period of hours, and looking at the wall, and I just, I don't understand how that is in any way providing what's necessary. Would I have a control over it, I want to make you all aware of it, because I'm planning on writing something to the paper, and the school board in appearance the next meeting in that regard, and with that being said, I appreciate the fact that we don't have our meetings in constantly, but the school board allows us to do that, so it's really, it's in my craw, and it's bothering me a lot, so I want to make you all aware of that before I write that letter to the school board and to the paper.
Very good.
Yes.
Anything else to come before council? We are adjourned.